Good evening, members of the City Council. Can I have a motion to appoint Alderman Rommel as Mayor Pro Tem for this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Rommel as Mayor Pro Tem for the meeting.
Can I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome to the Monday, March 20th session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the deputy city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Alderman Morris is absent. Alderman Novit?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Nottes?
Here.
Alderman Preschler?
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all rise, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is reports of the mayor, our Mayor Pro Tem. In my, in my case, I would like to introduce Elise Blatchwitz, who is an archive intern and also Margaret Boyer, our city clerk. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the City Council. I am incredibly proud tonight to introduce Elise to you. She has spent the last three years with us, mostly in the library, that's behind the chambers, going through some amazing things. There's some samples out on the table for you to take a look at when this evening's meeting is over. Like I said, Elise came to us as a volunteer through Lake Forest College. She also finished a credited semester here as a intern archivist for the city. With that, I don't want to steal too much of her thunder, but also this evening we have with us Carol Summerfield, who is the executive director at the Lake Forest, Lake Bluff History Center, who's actually going to fill us in tonight with some timely information before Elise takes the stand and to let us know great stuff. So with that, here's Carol.
Hi, and I want to thank you all for this donation. But one of the things I really wanted to emphasize in this is that the work that Elise has done helps expand the way Lake Forest's museum functions. And I spent the afternoon chatting with the folks at the National Archives about potential grants. And one of the questions that they always have is what is the value to the larger community? And the work that Elise has done has helped fuel that information for us so that we can demonstrate that the model that Lake Forest has put forth over the last hundred and twenty-some years, hundred and forty years demonstrates how you maintain vibrancy within a community over time. And so the ability to have these archives onsite, to be able to use them to help show researchers and historians how Lake Forest has functioned is incredibly valuable. And it is to our great credit that we have somebody like Elise compiling this and helping us understand exactly what these holdings are. So with that, I'll have her talk to you about what they are.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council. I'm honored and excited to be here with you today to present the progress of our archival library and to announce our donation to the History Center of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. So before I get into things, I first want to tell you a little bit about myself. My name is Elise Blatchwitz. I'm a current senior at Lake Forest College. I'm a double major in art history and French. I'm extremely passionate about historical preservation and public access, which, as Carol mentioned, is a huge reason why we're donating to the History Center is to help, you know, preserve Lake Forest history and give public access to these justice dockets that we're donating. As Biddy mentioned earlier, this project has been about three years in the making, so definitely not a small thing. So this project has been rather tedious, and each semester of work marks a new chapter of progress. So in the spring of 2022, I created a very early library system, which consisted of simple categories that would allow me to sort the large amounts of documents that we had. This is also when I conducted a very rough material assessment, which mostly consisted of identifying and separating fragile and/or damaged documents and books from the rest of our documents. In the fall of 2022, I started and completed the library overhaul. We have some great before and after pictures to show you later in the presentation. The overhaul consisted of shelving documents according to year and books according to subject matter. This was also when I began researching preservation and transcription techniques that would allow us to further the life of our collection. This research influenced my early transcription and digitization efforts, which will later be continued by the History Center. Now, in the spring of 2023, I'm continuing to work on preservation and increasing the efficiency of said preservation. Examples of this include buying a new scanner to maximize the amount of pages that we can scan at a time, as well as completing transcriptions of the most readable documents first. My goal is not to preserve the whole collection before I graduate. That would be impossible with the amount of stuff that we have, but rather just to create a solid foundation that individuals after me can build upon. We're also excited to close out this semester by donating justice dockets and arrest records to the History Center. So this is what my workstation used to look like. As you can see, I just am very roughly sorting documents by subject, just because of the sheer volume that we have, especially at this time before everything was out of the box. It was really difficult to sort things effectively. So we just did it by very general subject matter. On the far left are some, is there a laser pointer? Yes. So over here on the far left, these are examples of like police records. On the far right, these are council minutes. So just sorting things by very general subject matter at first. Here's another picture of upstairs before it was completely overhauled. And then here's a close-up of all of the justice dockets over in this table, which are now shelved and will soon have a new home in the History Center. This is what the library looked like in the middle of fall semester. So redoing the library took me for the first half of fall semester of 2020, as well as all of spring of 2020, or 2022, excuse me. So it was a big project. It took a lot of time, a lot of patience. It wasn't easy. It was very frustrating. Here's another picture. These are all the documents sorted by year. Our oldest documents are from the mid-19th century. We do have an example on the table of an ordinance from 1860, which is, I think, the oldest document that I've found so far. And then these are the dockets that will eventually be donated. These were a real pain to sort. I do have a video. It's a time-lapse video. Sorting all of the shelves took about a week. And you can see what I do here is I flip to the inside, mark the dates, and then organize them. And as you can see later, I realized that one of the new dockets I pulled actually belongs on an already full shelf, so I had to take them all out and put them back in.
Been there, like the fan.
So there is still a lot left to do even in this semester alone. But I just wanted to give a quick overview on what the long-term goals of this project are. So as we mentioned many times before, donation is our number-one priority right now. We are so excited to donate to the History Center. I personally have worked with both Lori and Carol for an experiential course at Lake Forest College. They are both wonderful individuals, very dedicated to telling the history of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. And we are also hoping with this donation that this will aid in digitization of the justice dockets, which will aid public access and will also aid personal research or even bigger research, you know, for a class if someone wants to research their own family history. So we really just want to give that back to the community as well. Something that I think will be really important down the line, too, is community involvement. So as I mentioned before, I am currently transcribing documents. The goal of that is to complete transcriptions of all documents so that the originals don't have to be handled. Some of them are really not in good condition, and we don't really want people handling them more than they need to be in order to preserve the original. So that's a huge job. I haven't even completed a full folder yet, and I've been transcribing for about six months. So it takes a village. And I'm hoping that this can also create internship opportunities, volunteering opportunities for students, for the community. I think it'll be a really great thing to give to Lake Forest. If anybody has any questions, I would love to hear them. If you have any questions specific to the History Center, Carol can handle that. But in terms of the project or the internship, I would love to answer questions.
Are there questions from the council?
I was wondering if you could give us a highlight of what we have in front of us. I didn't have a chance before the meeting to look at this, but could you give us a little description of what we have here in front of us?
Yes. So on each corner, we have arrest books. In the one, I don't know if my laser pointer will show it, but on the one in the far-
Right in the corner.
Right, bottom-right corner, we do have some signatures from J. Edgar Hoover in there. So that's pretty cool. We also have some fingerprints from, you know, people who were arrested, but it's really cool to see how that process has changed. In the center, we have a history of Lake Forest book. It's currently flipped over to the current council or a council?
The first.
The first city council. And then right in the center, that sheet of paper is an ordinance from 1860. And then right next to me, I also have a petition. We posted about this on the City of Lake Forest Instagram, so you guys can also check that out. But this is a petition to change the name of Myrtle and University Avenue to Sheraton Road.
Is it typical that they then, after a year or whatever, they accumulate the information, then they bound it? Because these are bound volumes. Or is it, I take it the data's not entered, you know, as a bound volume, but is it single pages? Or how is the binding occurring?
It depends on the book. There are some where you can tell that pages were individually put in, so it's more like a binder than like an actual bound book. For these arrest records in particular, I would assume that they were, all the pages were compiled and then bound together instead of individually inserted, like we see in some of our city minutes or other council records, where you can tell that pages were inserted individually.
Thank you. Congratulations on the wonderful work and what you've been able to produce here.
Thank you.
Alderman Weber?
Thank you. Elise, really fascinating. I just had one quick question. What does your future look like? From moving forward with, you know, finishing this internship?
Grad school eventually, hopefully library sciences so that I can continue to do work like this. At first, I thought I wanted to go into curation, but I think my heart is really in historic preservation and especially document preservation. That's really what I'm into.
Thank you. Alderman Novit? And was this something you learned in the course of this project?
Yes. Yeah. So everything I learned onsite through research. I didn't know a lot going in, so a lot of things I had to look up myself. The National Archives website was my best friend, still is. So I got a lot of my information from other professionals.
Biddy told me that you learned how to read cursive, so you could translate some of these documents. So thank you for going that extra step, because I didn't realize kids aren't taught cursive anymore.
It's hard with these older documents especially because the kind of cursive is a little different.
Dilated, yeah.
Yep. Yeah. But I still have trouble reading regular cursive.
Thank you. It's great. This is wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Public Works Committee happened to meet in the library before City Council tonight. And I have to say, not knowing what you were going to be necessarily talking about, I was struck up in the room how well organized those shelves are.
Thank you.
It went immediately noticed in that room.
And I will, I will further comment. I pulled one of those books off the shelf and started looking through it. It's fascinating.
Yep.
It is such interesting. Feel, you should thumb through. Well, maybe not. Maybe don't touch it.
These ones are fine.
But it's great. It's a wonderful project. Thank you for doing it. Other questions or comments?
Some for Carol Summerfield and a little diversion. Last month, you did a presentation, Architectural Lake Forest, and unfortunately, I was out of town. I would have loved to have been there. Did you YouTube that or taped it or anything?
Yes, we did, actually. We tape almost all of our lectures, and then they're available on our YouTube website. So if you Google, go to YouTube and Google History Center of Lake Forest, you should be able to find those. And if it's not there, it might be on the Preservation Foundation's website, because I know that that was a joint project.
Okay. If I have any further trouble finding it, I'll give you a call.
Know where I live.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may, Elise, I cannot begin to explain the passion that you have for everything that you have done for the City of Lake Forest. It shows in all your work. You have set a bar. You set the standard for us, and words of thank you are really not enough. So with that, thank you very, very much.
I think we all would like to thank you up here on the dais as well. You've done a tremendous service to the City of Lake Forest, and hopefully, it will continue. But all of us are, every resident in this city really is in your debt for this project. So thank you so very much. The next item is the announcement of how well do you know sustainability in Lake Forest? We have a contest winner. I think Dana is going to show us some slides. Is that right? There we go. Based on recommendations from the city's Environmental Sustainability Committee, we've been working to incorporate more sustainability elements into new projects, as we all are aware. And on the back of the spring dialogue is a how well do you know sustainability in Lake Forest? And it was a contest where we asked residents to identify the sustainability elements pictured here. Now, wait a minute. I know we had a winner about historical items, and I think it was Alderman Preschler who won our last City Council contest. So we're going to, before we recognize the official winner, see if any of my colleagues can identify what's pictured here. They are all sustainability elements, and there are bonus points if you can name where they're located. Anyone want to take a stab at this?
Clearly, that's an electronic car charging station.
But where?
I have no idea where.
Fort Sheridan.
Bingo. Okay.
And the middle one, maybe McCormick Ravine? The green reservation?
No. It's a city project. McCormick was-
Yeah, that's where Open Lands, sorry.
Yeah, excuse me, Open Lands project, not a city project. This would be a city project. So does anyone remember the most recent city?
It's over by the college, but I have no idea.
All right. Want the answer? Do we give up? Ringwood Ravine. Remember that project just about a year ago? And then-
The Bio Swale in South Park.
Yes. Bingo. All right. Not bad. It's right off the parking lot in South Park. All right. So from all of the correct entries, we had to draw one lucky winner, and it's Leslie Pedley. Is Leslie here tonight? Leslie is not here tonight. Well, we will give her some Lake Forest swag when we catch up to her and want to congratulate her officially for entering our contest. And all the contest winners are winners, entrance are winners in our books. So thank you to everyone who participated. Hopefully, Dana will have some more contests coming up and some more winners. And, and the City Council continues to do pretty well on these, so. The next item on our agenda is to announce the city ward meetings, which are upcoming. And we certainly hope that all of our residents will take time out of their busy days to, to attend these. It's a chance to speak with your aldermen, and a lot of the city's staff will be there as well. The city manager will attend most of these and get your questions answered. So while we can all read this for residents at home, who may not be able to see that unless it's up, I will tell you that Ward 1 is Tuesday, April 18th at 7:00 at Gorton Center. Ward 2 is Tuesday, April 25th, again at 7:00 o'clock at Gorton. Ward 3 has, has changed it up a little, and they're going to Croya at 7:00 on April 11th. And Ward 4 is going to Dickinson Hall on April 13th at 7:00, which is a Thursday. The other three are Tuesdays. So Ward 4 always has to be a little different. Thank you. Alderman Bushman?
Just to add another additional comment to this, because unfortunately, last year, we never really were able to do our ward meetings. So hopefully, there's a lot of pent-up interest to see the aldermen and discuss different issues. Recognizing we have four, four different dates here, I think it should be an open invite that if you are in a ward and you have a conflict for appearing that date, you'll certainly be more than welcome to show up at other wards. Most of the agenda items are common one with the other. And certainly, from our perspective, we represent all the citizens. So again, if there is a conflict in your ward, feel free to show up at any other ward meeting. Encourage your, your participation.
Thank you for that reminder. It's a great reminder. Thank you very much. That concludes the comments of the Mayor Pro Tem, and now on to the city manager's comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council. Good evening. I have two items tonight. First, just wanted to provide a reminder to the council and the community at large that earlier today, the Finance Department initiated our annual vehicle sticker and parking permit renewal process. So I believe hard copies went out in the mail today. Electronic notifications will be sent tomorrow. And stickers are due to be purchased by May 1 of, for the upcoming fiscal year. Just a reminder for those who haven't seen it that we historically try to find a civic institution that we can spotlight and celebrate as part of our vehicle sticker process. And this year, very pleased to be able to, to celebrate the library's 125th-year anniversary, which they, which is, is, is this year. They have a variety of festivities that they have planned to commemorate the occasion. And in fact, the Library Board President will be joining us at a council meeting, I believe, next month as part of our community spotlight. But, but this year's vehicle sticker will be celebrating and recognizing the library for their milestone anniversary. Second, an update. I am going to ask Dana Olson, the city's communications manager, to provide both the council and the community with a bit of an update on the Deer Path Community Park Improvement Project. Beginning last year, Dana has been highly involved assisting public works, parks, and forestry with external communications to the community, particularly in areas where we know there may be some disruption. And I just want to give her and all of the staff she's worked with a lot of kudos, I think, in elevating, you know, our external communication so that people who may be impacted by these projects are aware of what's coming, when it's coming, what the nature of the work looks like. And so given her role and all that, I've asked her to come and just provide the council with a bit of an update on this project.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council. As City Manager Wishe mentioned, I'll be giving an update on construction for Deer Path Community Park Improvement Project. So construction is slated to begin next week with pre-construction activities. And so a little bit about what to expect during construction for the project. Construction activities will be confined to the project site, which is Deer Path Community Park and the tennis courts. There won't be any other activities outside of that area. And the primary way that people will notice construction on the project is by passing the park or noticing increased truck traffic along Deer Path Road. But there won't be any partial or full lane closures of Deer Path required for this project. We know there's been a lot happening on Deer Path in the last few years, and so thankfully, this project will not require any closures like that. The park will be closed for the duration of the project, and so athletic practices and games will be moved to other parks in Lake Forest. And access will be maintained at all times to the Recreation Center, to the Public Safety Building, and to Deer Path Middle School. And as I mentioned, the increased truck traffic during parts of the project is the primary way people will notice the project. There, we're working very closely with our partners at Deer Path Middle School to limit impacts from construction. We're going to be right in their backyard there, and so we're working closely with folks from the District 67 and from the middle school to ensure that we're limiting impacts while we can. When we get to the schedule here in a few slides, you'll notice that very intentionally, the most impactful parts of the project and the biggest time when work is happening isn't planned for the summer when school is not in session. There will be some general construction impacts, like noise from construction equipment. But again, that'll all be confined to the project site. And working hours are authorized from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but more likely than not, that will be, work will be wrapping up around 3:00, 3:30 so that it doesn't interfere with the pickup in the afternoon at Deer Path, as we know is a very busy time in that area. I have the construction map here, which is pretty small up there, but you can see the area outlined in yellow. That's where the temporary fencing will be, confining the project area. I'll just note a couple things. There's a white area up here. All of the construction traffic is going to be using Golf Lane, going south on Golf Lane. They won't be using Hastings Road. And so there's a dedicated area there for the construction traffic. And the traffic will use a special gravel access area so that public safety traffic is able to get out of, of that building, since we know we have some very important vehicles that need to exit that area promptly. I will note that the map here shows a temporary barricade in that area that will be in place in the periods of high truck traffic and high activity, which is the summer months. And so that won't be in place during the school year, but is something for safety to block off that part of the parking lot. But again, you'll be able to access the middle school, the rec center, from Hastings Road. So the schedule here shows the main phases of work for the project, and it shows the activity that'll be happening during those phases. But also, as I've mentioned a few times now, the main people, the main way people will notice the project is through truck traffic. So we included the level of truck traffic in the schedule, so you can see what, what to expect for that. And so the work that's starting next week is pre-construction activities, which will be delivering equipment, preparing the site, putting up that temporary fencing. And there'll be heavy truck traffic for that, but at spring break, school is not in session. And the town seems, tends to empty out a little bit. The first phase of work, excavation and onsite activities, the truck traffic will be minimal. That will be working and preparing the site. In May, things will ramp up a little bit with more moderate truck traffic as excavation and field prep continue. And then you'll notice that that phase extends right until the beginning of June, which is when school's out for the summer. And so the final grading and the field-based construction will be in June and July with a heavy amount of truck traffic for that work. And then in August, the turf installation and then the construction of the building and amenities, the truck traffic level will be moderate as school gets back in session in late August. And then September and October, final phase of the project with the final field installation, finishing up those building and amenities. And the project is expected to last through mid-October, weather-dependent. We're hoping for a dry, a dry summer so we can keep things, keep things moving. And I will, before I move on from the schedule, you'll see that, again, we're very intentional with when the busiest season for the project will be, which is during the summer. And we've heard from Deer Path Middle School that there won't be any summer school held there this year. So again, working in those, those summer months. And I just wanted to touch on, I'm communications person, so I have to talk about how we're letting people know about this project. We have a mix of methods that we use. We have a good framework in place from other construction projects, as City Manager Wishe mentioned. We did a lot of communications for construction last summer. We did a lot of communications for construction last summer, so we have a good, good framework in place. But we vary print and digital notifications so that we can make sure that everybody knows what's happening. Where, one of our goals is to limit surprises. And so by the end of it, you'll be tired of hearing about all the work that we're doing, but then we've accomplished our goal of letting everybody know what's going on. And so last week, we sent out, mailed a letter and a fact sheet to nearby neighbors and folks along Deer Path Road, that truck route, to let them know about the project. We have a dedicated project webpage that has information that kind of mirrors what was in the fact sheet that was mailed out. But that webpage will keep up to date as the project progresses with the latest news. We'll include information about the project in our weekly email newsletter, the E-News, and then share posts on social media as well. And then the Lake Forest Now app is another way that will let people know about the project. We have a dedicated button in the app, and I didn't bring my phone up here. But we do have, you can access the project webpage and also the live construction camera from the app, which right now isn't that interesting yet, but will be soon. And then we'll use the app to send push notifications at major points in the project. We're also working closely with stakeholders. We have our internal stakeholders, like Public Safety, Recreation, Croya, and then also the middle school, and our youth sports organizations that we're keeping in the loop on what's happening with the project. We'll have some signage in the project area that has general information and then a flyer box so we can include a flyer with the latest information on what's happening. We also have a project display at the Recreation Center where there's a replica of the turf surface that you can walk on. Not quite big enough to kick a ball, but you can step around and see how that feels. And we have some other information on the project there as well. And then throughout the project, we'll be capturing progress with drone videos and sharing those along the way. And then I just, I think it's probably too dark to see the construction camera, but just a little preview here. So again, not that interesting now. Occasionally, you see a bird fly by, but once the project is ramping up, it'll be a great way to see how things are progressing. And then before I wrap up here, just a reminder that there's a groundbreaking for the project coming up on Thursday, April 6th. We invite City Council to attend and members of the public as well. We are excited to celebrate the start of this project, so we hope that you'll join us at Deer Path Community Park on April 6th.
Thank you.
And then with that, available for questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Yes.
Since they're not going to have summer school for the kids at DPM, at DPM, are they going to spread them around? Are they still going to offer summer school classes?
Yes, of course. Yeah, they're still offering summer school, but they're just not planning to have it at Deer Path Middle School.
Thanks. Alderman notes?
Will buses be routed back along, I can't remember the name of these, East Side Access Road? Is that how buses will be entering and exiting? Or will buses go out by the police station?
I believe the buses will follow their normal, their normal route. And I think we're talking with schools about what that, what that looks like, but I don't think the buses will be impacted. Because again, the project will be dedicate, will be in the, that footprint of Deer Path Park. But to avoid the trucks is probably what you're, you're getting at. And we have a stakeholder pre-construction meeting next, or this week on Thursday with folks from the schools where we'll be walking around the project site and talking about things like that.
Thank you, Dana.
Other questions? Alderman Gashkarian?
Dana, thank you very much for your presentation. Has there been any thought in terms of a communication strategy with our partners in the Central Business District and what, how it might potentially impact them? And what comes to mind? I think of those grocery stores or other stores which may have some level of regular delivery. And I realize we're probably dealing with Teamsters at that point, so there's not a lot we're going to do. But is there, is there going to be an outreach so, you know, they're up to date?
That's an excellent question. We've been working with the Chamber of Commerce to kind of bridge that gap with the business community, but we can make sure that those, particularly the businesses that have trucks that are coming through, know that there's going to be an increased level of traffic.
Great, thanks.
Other questions from the council?
I have a question, Dana. How extensive is the notification going to be to neighbors? I, I think about the Deer Path Road construction where we were getting questions from people on Owani Road, on Golf Lane, on Hastings. Are you extending your notifications down some of those roads, which are in the third ward and in the second ward? Because, you know, as they're exiting their streets onto Deer Path, they may have a little trouble with some of this traffic.
Yes, when, the letter that went out last week went to a broad group of addresses of people along, anybody with an access road that goes to Deer Path. Because we followed a similar method from the Deer Path Pump Station and the ComEd Bridge, where we just want anybody who we think is going to be coming through that area. We sent, we mailed notification, but again, with our digital communications, we're hoping to reach a broader audience so that people who maybe didn't get that letter are still aware that there's going to be an increased level of activity on Deer Path.
Great, thank you. No further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to committee reports. I think that Superintendent of Engineering Byron Koots has a report for us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and members of City Council. Just trying to get this at the right level. Dana's a little shorter than me, so. All right, tonight, I am going to give a quick presentation on the Sir William Lane Water Main Replacement Project. So in the world of water, this is a pretty straightforward project. Looking at the map on the right, we'll start there. Looking at the blue, we're replacing an eight-inch water main on Sir William from Lawrence to Everett. Something you may notice on the map is we are directly north of Everett School, which we are aware of, and we have started our outreach to them. And with the project not starting for a couple months, we have plenty of time for coordination, but minimizing disruptions to them will be one of the important parts of the project. So some back, background. This street experienced numerous water main breaks over the last few years. We're talking like five or six, and I believe a few of them were like back-to-back, like, like one night and then the night after. So really was time-consuming for operations. It takes them away from maintaining other assets. And then also, anytime there's a water main break, there's a shutdown that occurs. And you know, that's anywhere from two, three, four, or five hours, and it's at different times of the day or night. So there was a lot of disruptions to the adjacent neighbors. So whenever we were deciding our water main project for this year, this one really rose to the top in terms of just the impacts to the community and the importance of having a reliable water main in this area. Also with the project, so we bid the water main part of the project, but then we also bid the annual valve replacement project this year as well, which includes eight other valves throughout the city. So it's, it's not in this area, it's spread out through the community. And those valves are decided through our valve turning program. So basically, there's a contractor that comes in and turns valves on a rotation. They rotate through the years, and they make a list of valves that are inoperable. They just don't fully close or they don't open. So we are able to replace eight of those valves with this project as well. The combined budget from the water fund is $950,000. We bid it out earlier this year in February, opened up the bids on February 23rd, I believe. We had five bidders, which we were pretty happy with, and the prices, the costs were, were pretty close at the bottom. You like to see them pretty close so that you know that everyone interpreted the plans the same. The low bidder was ALAMP Concrete Contractors, just over $888,000. It's been a few years since we have worked with them. We did bring them in, we sat them down, we went through our expectations, and we were satisfied with their approach for the project and their overall experience. The recommendation is to award at the full budget amount of $950,000, which would include a contingency of $61,355, which is roughly 6% or 7%. The project is anticipated to be completed at the end of August, so kind of depends on when we start. So we're working with the school, but most likely we're going to start in mid-May, which will allow us to finish a little earlier in August, which the, with the idea that we can resurface right after. And it's actually being resurfaced with a different contractor from, from the resurfacing program. But the idea is to start a little bit earlier in May so that we can finish in August and have it wrapped up pretty close before school starts on August 23rd, I believe. So those, those coordination efforts are ongoing, but right now, we're kind of aiming at mid-May for a start. In terms of other impacts, so we did choose to directionally drill this project. If you think back to the Deer Path Water Main Project a year or two ago, that's the same technology that we use there. So we're not open cutting, basically. They have a machine that basically bores underneath the ground, and then once they bore it in two or 300-foot lengths, they'll actually pull the pipe back in the same hole. There will be some open cutting, you know, around fire hydrants and connections and such. But the directionally drilling really does reduce the impacts, and it minimizes some of the full-depth restoration. Also with this location, being close to the school and trying to minimize impacts to the residents in general, we came up with the idea of staging all of the material and equipment at the parking lot at Fire Station 2. They have that parking lot on the north side. So a lot of the equipment and pipes will be over there and not on the street in front of all the residents. And then in terms of communication, I know Dana has the big plan for the Deer Path Park. We'll also be working with her on this project as well, but it's a little more straightforward. And we will be, in addition to coordinating with the school, which I mentioned is important, we'll be mailing out letters typically two to three weeks in advance of the work. And this item is part of the omnibus vote, and with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent of Engineering Koots? Alderman Bushman?
Thank you. I do recall the water main breaks with the citizen complaints in the past. And so thank you for undertaking this project and dealing with this issue. I do also recall, in the same area, that we encountered some pond overflow, so that would flood into the streets from some ponds. I take it this project has nothing to do with the stormwater issues that we may have in this area?
Yeah, correct. It, it's separate with it coming from the water fund, but, but that's something we can look at as well.
Well, I think, last time we had the problem, I think, I recall Public Works saying it was like a, a project that was slated like three years out, and I think we're one year down, so it may be a couple more years out on that. But I assumed it had no impact on the, the stormwater flow.
Correct.
The other question is up, the valves, and, you know, we did have the, the one brake, and the valves didn't quite work as we wanted them to work then. And I know you folks have been spending a lot of great time and effort to get the valves to work right. You talk about replacement of eight. So is this an actual replacement of eight valves? Or are we adding additional valves to give us more control over the water system?
Yeah, so generally, it's replacement of existing valves that are just, they're in place already, but they, you just can't get, you can't open them or they don't close fully.
Yeah.
And a lot of times, the valves that are part of this program are valves that are either difficult to, to fix because maybe they're in the middle of the street and it's just difficult to do in-house, or they're larger valves, like a 14-inch or a 16-inch valve, which is just difficult to work with, and it takes a specialized contractor.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you for your report.
Yeah, thank you.
We're going to take a moment and ask if there are any members of the public who would wish to address the City Council at this meeting. If so, step up to the podium, state your name, and we will recognize you. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we will move on. The next item is omnibus vote consideration. I will read each item. If there's any item that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately, please let me know at the end of the, of the reading. The first item is approval of the March 6th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes. The second item is annual vendor approval for fiscal year 2024. The third item is to grant approval to convey justice civil dockets, justice criminal dockets, and arrest book records of historic value for preservation to the Lake Forest Lake Bluff History Center on behalf of the Lake Forest Police Department. The next item, number four, is award of the lowest responsive and responsible proposal for the Dialogue Newsletter Printing Services to Vogue Printers in the amount of $26,076 and a 10% contingency in the amount of $2,607 for a grand total of $28,683. The fifth item, approval to purchase the Verkata Security Camera System from Modern Media Technologies in the amount of $51,490 and structured cabling from Gray Bar in the amount of $15,515. The sixth item is approval, approval of an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution appropriating $250,000 in rebuild Illinois funds to be used for Phase 2 Design Engineering Services at the Lake Woodbine Bridge. The second item, approval of a Public Works Committee recommendation to purchase 2,000 pounds of road salt from Morton Salt in the amount of $164,129 for the fiscal year 24 winter. The eighth item is to award the low bid for the Sir William Lane Water Main Replacement Project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors, Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $888,645 and a contingency in the amount of $61,355 for a total project cost of $950,000. And the ninth and final item is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board. This will be the first reading, and if desired by the City Council, the final approval. Are there any items that any alderman would like to see removed and taken separately? Alderman Bushman?
Mayor Pro Tem may ask some questions about an item, and based upon the questions, I suspect there would be no need to withdraw it from the omnibus. But I'd like some clarification on item number four, which is the Dialogue Newsletter Printing Service for Vogue Printers. Who is our current publisher for that service?
We're currently using Lake County Press.
Were they one of the bidders?
They were. They were our highest.
And then I was a little confused. You talk about it being a three-year contract. Is the amount that you're asking us to approve now for a one-year term or for all three years?
It's a one-year term with the ability to extend it to three. And so you're approving the one-year term tonight.
And in terms of pricing for subsequent years, is that covered in the contract or is that renegotiated?
That will be renegotiated each year, but they have given us a, they will, have said that they will keep the rate for the next three years, but we're going to go for a one-year contract with the intention of extending it, depending on how things go. Since we've worked with Lake County Press for a number of years, so we're branching out to have some significant cost savings for the printing services, but we don't want to commit to three years with someone new until we, you know, give it...
So the anticipation would be come back a year from now for covering a second year or maybe even two years, depending on how everything goes.
Yeah, at that point, I think we'd be ready to do two years.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anything further? And you do not want that item removed from the agenda. Hearing no further questions, is, is there a motion to approve the nine omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deputy City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlan?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is old business, and we have none tonight, nor do we have new business. Are there any members of the City Council who would like to take this opportunity to add anything to our meeting? add anything to our meeting tonight? Hearing nothing from the dais, I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Come on.
Is there a second?
Second. Yes, please.
Let's go on.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.